It is six thirty eight and let's begin our meeting. On the meeting board.
Let's do a quick poll, Chair.
Roll call this.
Chair Giuliani.
President.
Vice Chair Rossi.
President.
Commissioner Quaid.
President.
Commissioner Finley.
Here.
Commissioner Elser. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay, public comments, if anyone online just ask for the public comments.
I don't see anyone online yet, but we do have an in-person public comment by Josh Betta.
That's so, hey Josh, don't worry, good to see you.
Very good, thank you, good evening everybody.
Good evening.
I worked under administration for Judy Chu when she first got elected in Long Island Park. I work for God as herself, Dorothy Cohen here. Each one of them never played a game around the fact, you know, respect and duty. I've seen something new here and I've just been fascinated in particular with that and this great government and that's simple Sheila. Because I know somebody in the room here who has done so much work on three questions. They don't spin your head, but I've seen her work. She takes very seriously what she's doing here and put in countless hours, she has made compelling cases. On three factual lines. One, that the city has structural imbalance between two and five million dollars. Number two. The math of over spending. Means that the reserve picture. Appears to be much different than the council and commission center understand. I would dare say not one of you understand the reserve position of the city position. There are five categories. You don't even know what they are. And she's created another, another confusion in Pandora's box around an insurance fund. Where the only thing she's asking for. Is an accurate accounting of the in and out on the general ledger and an accurate representation of the liability on the balance sheet. It's the simplest thing in the world she's asking for. I've seen her support data, ladies and gentlemen, the presumption of response here lies with the staff. As a CFO. What I would have done to partner with someone like this and use their data and start using it four months ago, how far I could have taken us. She's offered a free gift, simple Sheila Rossi, but guess what? Simple is not easy. The work that she has done is not easy at all. And that's the respect. Has anybody thought, really calm down since May and June, has anybody thought on the staff side? Of using her data to analyze it so we can have an adult conversation, Stephanie, how much time do I have?
Thirty seconds. Yeah, thirty seconds.
I'm sorry?
Thirty seconds.
It's time for the adult conversation. Simple work, not easy work, a response that is befitting your committee. In my respect, Mr. Chair, for what you have done to establish guidelines, procedures, and my well wishes and my service to you. And my hope and expectation that your agenda is an independent one in addition to the one that the city may be imposing upon you. Given the curiosity that is now being expressed by your work. Very able, committee.
That's time.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh, where are any other public comments?
I do not see any other public comments, Chair.
Thank you very much. Status of insurance recovery, Louis, I think this is you.
This is, thank you, Chair, so I wanted to bring a little bit of good news. Yes.
I hear it's more than a little bit.
A little bit, yeah. So, so last time I was here, we kind of went over some of the basics of, of our risk management program and. One of these is general liability and the team over the last year. Has taken a deep dive into our general liability claims and they looked at all of our claims and. We paid particularly close attention to those claims where the amount of the claim was over a hundred thousand dollars. Because that's what would trigger a reimbursement from Prism. And we found that there was a total of eight claims. That met that threshold. And our team looked through all of the claims in detail. We looked at the amount that we would do for Prism, looked at how much we spent and we submitted, starting in September of this year. Eight reimbursement requests to Prism. To date, we've received seven of the eight. We received about two point six million dollars of reimbursements in the month of October alone. That's money in the bank, those are physical checks that have been deposited and accounted for by finance. Out of the, that's two point six out of the two point eight that were owed, there's about two hundred and forty nine thousand dollars.
Engine response, person sick, ALS.
Engine, are you on person, engine thirty three R thirty four, person six, seven eight seven, stop there, avenue. But B-Boy, often having urgent care, Fillmore Street, both on Main Street, right, engine thirty three, not.
That's thirty three five, there you are.
Engine thirty three.
It might beep in the middle of the sentence.
So outstanding, out of the eight, we have two hundred and forty nine thousand, two hundred and thirty five dollars that are outstanding. We expect to receive that check in the next week. Tina is our new risk manager, I don't think we, I should bring Tina one of these days to so she can meet all of you, but Tina is our new risk manager. Together with Tina, the team has, has done a lot of work in getting through this stuff and. Working with Prism and getting the reimbursement and the money that the city really deserves and part of, part of the. Last time I came, we were talking a lot about process and improvements and one of the improvements is better accountability. In terms of tracking our claims, knowing what's out there, knowing or keeping on top of where we are in the process. For these claims from beginning to end, not majority of the claims that we, we deal with don't ever go over a hundred thousand dollars, but. There are some that do and the ones that do end up making a significant impact to the satisfaction insurance fund. So that's why we're happy to announce that we received a significant portion of what's owed to the city. That makes, I think, a significant impact to the satisfaction.
Louis, we're, we're very happy to hear this, appreciate, appreciate the work of the team. I notice I'm unbreakable in this moment, but what process have you put in place to ensure that we don't find ourselves here eighteen months in this same place eighteen months?
That's a great question, Chair, so, so a couple of things, we have. I, I think prior to this administration, there, there really hadn't been dedicated staff in, in overseeing and managing our risk. And so there's, we have a dedicated risk manager, we have a, an analyst, senior analyst that is also supporting risk, which we never had before. We have a very close working relationship with our new city attorney, Roxanne, and, and we consult with her regularly on claims. The process in terms of. How things, how claims go from A to Z is being documented as we speak, these are processes that we're, we're building into desk manuals. So that it's, it's not just institutional knowledge that goes away when the person goes away, we're building mechanisms in place so we can train folks on the things that we need to do. We've also expanded and increased our communication with Carl Warren, who's our third-party administrator. We have regular quarterly meetings where we go over each of the claims and where we're at with them for claims that. We're not seeing a lot of movement on, we concentrate on those and we ask a lot of questions. We also have access to the Carl Warren file management system that we didn't have before. So everything that Carl Warren knows about a claim is accessible at our fingertips. So there's a layer of transparency there that we didn't have before.
Those sounds like very, any other, any other questions from?
Yeah, so you, so you can actually see, you've got, you've got a list of all the claims that have been submitted, which ones are still pending, which ones have been paid.
Exactly.
Wonderful. So I have. First thing, I also want to. To, and he was running some numbers last night and to give you an understanding. Prior to this, the, the four-year treatment and who knows what's before that, that is. A thirteen point eight percent reimbursement rate on the general liability because to Louis's point, the previous administration did not have any structure in place for this management whatsoever. And we took on Prism, which was the, the idea that we could do a better job during this management than with CGKIA. And then we put in any infrastructure from the accounting standpoint, listening to this and putting processes in place. So coming back and then look back to the why, because like seventy five actual rails so far off from what our actuals were and. You know, a lot of it was, yes, things went up that we also had to two million dollars difference with actual rails expected us to be. Getting back and we weren't going after anything that, so they were like, wow, I'm gonna say, right, so it's like, this is like me and the team. Or all of you going this last year to do that, so a lot of it, you know, they're very hard on this and, you know, Fred and I have been working on our insurance fund thing, a lot of it's. Looking back to see what went wrong and what went wrong, nothing's, place in first place. And that led to the situation and then knowing, okay, now how do we put in? Then get it to be on the same page of understanding and then put in the guardrails for future, and my one thing I would like to ask Louis and like figuring out what's a good way to do that. From a KPI standpoint, some things, I would want the finance commission to feel alert in the future and I'm thinking long-term, right? So a lot of this is like having you put in those infrastructure pieces and especially make sure that the finance commissions of the future go, oh yeah, we should be checking that before we get into. A problem. And then my, my only question I have is that I know that we have projected reimbursement in the twenty three, we covered for a million dollars, but this is separate, this is in a historical way.
That's true, I think. Yes, to answer your question, that is correct, these are these, all of these cases are, you know, going back from twenty one.
Right, it predates most of people in this one.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, back to twenty seventeen, yeah, these are outstanding. That we haven't been reimbursed for anything.
Even, even the, the one in there that for the two hundred and forty nine thousand was like from sixteen.
Right.
So, so they're, they're all.
So Louis, what I just heard, Mr. Rossi asked me to do is to work with Surlee. Surlee is doing a, a monthly or semi-per月的 monthly reports with us on KPIs. Would you make this a KPI line any place on how you're dealing with this? Is that asked you?
So, I mean, I don't know.
We, we, I'll tie in, Mr. Rossi, we actually can keep that as a part of our budget process as well. Every department across KPI, they track, they track, so I'd actually put that on the first thing, if you have suggestions. Would be like us to add as a KPI element for the finance department to start tracking. So for example, I think one of the things that I would expect staff to do is quarterly updates to both the finance, here's an option to console. To track our reimbursements and any new insurance file, that also should be regular monthly. Louis, I heard you had a monthly meetings, when you present and Paul Warren, and I think that's a major point, so I keep this meeting with them regularly and tracking, stretching, they're going to be discussing. So I'd be most important to talk to the KPI, if you have any other suggestions, just for you to buy. So it's not, because this is the time as we start to think about our reported worth of the KPIs, I think.
I'm trying, I'm just thinking of when we go into the project process, my thought is, you know, starting with Jenny, where the easy. Down, so there's only lots of money, like, oh, that's, we're ready to go on project. So like, they looked at the insurance fund, we looked at the actuarials, we looked at the, these different things.
Great, you were also working with Jane, yeah, now, do you have any other comments or questions? No, just to me. So this, oh, sorry, Jane.
One good question, so I know you're seeing this like from twenty one and before, are these cases that we recently settled?
So, so some of these cases go back to twenty six.
Right, I know that the, the cases went right back, but I know, but a lot of these have been recently settled, just so you know, like we've settled many of these.
In the last year, yeah, a good chunk in the last.
They were, they were all on reimbursements, I mean, as I said, looking at it, they, you're gonna have, not great, um. Um, workers' contract, it's like a sixty-six percent reimbursement and on general liability is thirteen point eight percent. Four years. Um, again, I think I have one more question, which is maybe one thing that we need to see, that insurance fund, so this goes to part of that. That's, sorry, the insurance fund, the reserve.
So.
Does this apply to the insurance?
This, this.
Because we had a negative balance of about two seventy-five, right?
Yes, so this, this applies to the twenty-three million dollars of the insurance fund. And so if we, the anticipated dollar figure is about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars positive balance. Once we collect the final two hundred and forty nine thousand.
Okay, so positive.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So that would put us right there as far as.
Yeah, fairly neutral kind of a condition, which is really ideally lucky.
Right, fair.
The other thing with respect to like the actuary reports is, as Councilmember Ron had mentioned, with all these base settlements that had happened. That has caused the actuary to increase their liability. With that said, the expectations over time, if we start doing a better job, this management side, these bases are subsiding. But the actual liabilities will sort of decrease, right, so.
Would be by.
Yeah, so that's, so for example, from twenty-two to twenty-three, in twenty-two, the actual liability was two point three million. And twenty-three, it jumped to two point seven, so it increased by another four hundred thousand. The expectation is within a year, possibly two years, we'll start seeing that start to come.
Right. And how much of that is the short-term, this long-term?
You know, I don't, I, I, I can, I can answer that for you, I can, I can look into it off.
Yeah, and I, and I also have to share, because I was, you know, playing around with the numbers, we had to look at them, which is one of those things. And I have to show you that work as well. Interested to figure out what's a good way to make it opt to.
Wait, would you see this and maybe have any questions?
Thank you, Frank, we're getting up, we're getting, so council takes a litigation report every six months. And that, there is one coming up, I think, our new city attorney is, there's you want to be in June, where so we'll have a good idea of what else is outstanding. But I also want to say that, so we'll get a better idea of what's still left. But this, I think we've been pretty settling pretty significant cases. And I will say also, we are getting from Roxanne when it comes up in closed session. To get the memo on, here's what the claim is, here's how much you've spent, here's how much we anticipate spending, to sort of, we get a really, really great. Data synopsis and like what, where we stand financially, just sort of point that out.
And I have to say, I mean, like, it's kind of amazing the work you've done, because they just went, I mean, they went through nothing. And like I look at, they went through math and they went through nothing and actually put in the system to their back and get all of those reimbursements and that's multi-year. So, because then the next step is figuring out how to reduce things.
But that's already something we're talking about, our goal would be, there's two other big ones, one is. You know, council has asked several questions about where are we headed with our insurance, our carrier. So in the next year, that's going to be something that Louis's team will be exploring, looking at our existing carrier and looking to see if there's an opportunity for us to be committed. No, that's one. And the second one is, the city really hasn't focused on this management as a, as kind of a holistic program. So we, we're going to be launching your, your risk management where with everything that we do and all of our operations, we look at it from a standard perspective. And now that we actually have a full practice and that we get to oversee it, we can start with certain mechanisms in place of how to utilize those pieces.
I have to say for the commission, thank you for listening to us, thank you for hearing us, thank you for sending us to Philly. I feel, we feel her, okay, thank you very much. Last question on this, when you chicken not for lunch?
Definitely.
Last week.
Actually, I think about last week.
Guys, congratulations, Louis, appreciate it, you and your hard work. Any other questions about the insurance recovery? And the processes that we're listening for, these things are putting in place to ensure that we don't see a leaky of this, or at least.
That Fred and I have a way to present our, at the next meeting, really it's kind of a historical, we'll back and so we can have discussion.
We absolutely, and have you helped, have you helped, shared that with Louis yet and has he built that into a process?
I don't know, because we were waiting for him.
Okay, perfect.
Whatever, whatever way, so. I mean, some, some of it actually has, I mean, some of it was surprising, because we won't really get fourteen years of audio soon.
How much fun can you?
So we found us an interesting, interesting.
So, thank you, thank you for doing that and we will make sure that, Stephanie, would you make sure that that is on our agenda for the next meeting, whenever that they. That's a discussion we're gonna have there on the next meeting.
But it's nice to have a session like.
I'm a lot happier to find my day. Any other comments, questions?
We had just one more thing, Chair, last time I was here, the commission made a request for a breakdown. Summary level breakdown of, you know, by causation or a general liability bond, and so I do have that for you today, I was just making sure that you, you would.
So that'd be okay, that'd be a bridge for you to get into. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Great, great deal, I hear you're gonna be introduced to us. Turn it over to you, John.
Okay, thank you, Chair, so at the September twenty eighth finance mission meeting, we had Williams, Stafford, we were sitting at the gate, this is the outlook. For the city's general fund and operation. At the time, it was, it was discussed where there was concerns about. The, the finance commission wanting a more holistic view of all the funds and analysis for our long, long range planning purposes. So to that end, we took that, we took that in and we, we reached out to several firms or we researched several firms and we reached out to. NHA advisors to see.
By our house response.
Hey, this is an action hundred hour test, we are currently preparing, okay.
Good.
You triggered that, John.
So, so we, we listened, you know, to the feedback from the finance commission, so we, we, we did some research and we reached out to. Mr. Hill here with NHA advisors. Mr., Mr. Hill is the managing partner with the firm, he's been a professional in public finance since eighty-nine, he's a founding partner of NHA advisors. His clients include California cities, special districts, counties, school districts, former redevelopment agencies throughout the state. In addition to providing traditional finance, financial advisory expertise in public finance, Mr. Hill provides guidance and expertise on other financial matters. Including public policy recommendations and appropriate capital financing strategies. Mr. Hill and NHA advisors is going to assist the city in developing a sophisticated model, modeling. To expand our scope of our five-year projection and to take a more holistic approach to understanding the city's financial landscape. The expanded scope will include four types of models for the general, general. Special revenue funds, enterprise funds, or, and our capital improvement funds. So we want to take a cap, a comprehensive approach to this, that will enable us to be able to allocate resources more efficiently. Prioritize projects to ensure continued prosperity for the city. With that said, I would like to introduce Craig Hill and we can take it.
Great, just one moment. I'm impressed, this is the second time your team's heard us to respond to this in a very positive and impressive way, so I want to compliment you, thank you for listening and for the fun.
Good evening, I think we have a short slide deck that we'll go through just to introduce the firm a little bit more and then how we typically approach these types of projects. It's, as you can imagine, you're not alone, there are a number of cities throughout the state that are grappling with one, ever-changing. Revenue buckets and certainly on the expenditure side, getting a, getting a grip on something as simple as CalPERS. Can I say that, it's essentially simple, so. Can we do the screen share?
In one second.
I'll, I'll start by saying, we're doing a lot of work up and down the state right now, focused on cities and special districts. And no two communities are the same, right, whether it's from a financial perspective, a political perspective, a geographic perspective, so. Our work includes some very small communities like Hidden Hills, your neighbor to, we're looking west, all the way up to San Francisco. It's, you know, almost a million people and I'm sure you, you hear that they're in the news all the time for, they're, they're doomed with, which the press loves to talk about, so. Next slide, please. What we've really focused our firm on over the, the last twenty years has been this refinement from what a traditional financial advisor was. Which was, oh, you're the bond people, we need to build a new city hall, we need to build a new fire station, can you help us issue bonds? As you can imagine, that's a very small part of what a financial commission focuses on or city staff focuses on because. You're, you're very rarely doing these big capital projects, but almost on a daily basis, you're dealing with budgets and financial implications of. Changes in sales tax or changes in your property taxes or negotiations for labor, what it does to your expenditures and. Ken Ordoff will talk a little bit, he gives you the update after, after me on, you know, kind of which some of your financial numbers are, but. What we recognize is a lot of our clients were asking us, can you help us with this other side of the equation? Yes, we, we know you understand capital and how to finance capital project, but can you help us on the budget side? You know, we are not a CPA firm, we're not an audit firm, we don't come from a traditional accounting background. But we understand budget and we understand how, as John mentioned, a holistic approach needs to be taken to. Not only dealing with your general fund operation side, but what so many people forget about, which is. The infrastructure and the capital improvement projects that you have, my point, you can only imagine politically that it's easy to. Take a project and kick the can because, well, we don't have five million dollars to fix that or. We really need to deal with just making payroll, so that becomes the, the low hanging fruit that, that gets deferred and you really do have to. Like, just because you say you have a balanced budget, if you're not really addressing all of your demands and all of your needs. You don't really have a balanced budget, right, it's just you're deferring something that otherwise you might want to be stocking money away. We, we're currently working with about fifteen cities that are looking at revenue measures for twenty twenty-four. Not because they don't have a balanced budget today, but because they're recognizing, you know, our public works is telling us, we've got fifty to seventy-five million dollars in needs. That isn't fitting in our budget, so we just keep the firm, so is there a way we could rebuild our budget with potentially new revenue sources? To now have an extra million, two, three million here that we will sock away or put towards our capital budget, so. Demonstrated here on this slide is just really what we call our practice groups, I have somebody in the firm that is assigned to managing. And being the, the expert in each of these, some of them are simple services like continuing disclosure, that's just a regulatory thing that. The city has with regards to any debt that has to have reporting. As John mentioned, we do a lot of policy work around reserve funds, around, okay, what is the appropriate? Standards that we might want to hold our council to and have them adopt firm policies. And then the rest of it is traditional, right, infrastructure, utilities, those are just, you know, how do we, how do we pay for that stuff? What we're gonna focus on for the city is really, I'm sorry, that's that all blue, that, that basically is pension and fiscal sustainability. We think fiscal sustainability. We think fiscal sustainability is the key term because again, what you're talking about here is us looking at your budget, looking at your revenues and your expenditures from a historic perspective. We can't change it, but we can see what kind of volatility you have. Because things like sales tax can bounce around a lot and if you're budgeting to a high number or an optimistic number, right, it can get you in trouble and then after that, and this is how our state works, right, where they, they project out revenues that they think are in the billions of dollars and they find out, oh, no, we're only gonna be fifty billion dollars short. So it's important to have that fiscal sustainability mindset as we really kind of go through this. Next slide, please. We have assigned to this team, myself, our head of fiscal sustainability, Christian Springer, and Matt DePhillips, who's actually on site taking any comments that we may have as we jump into this project. Next slide. Getting into how we will approach, there's a little bit of the, for lack of a better word, the forensic accounting side, which will be asking staff to do a big data dump on us with all of the historical information. We're not going to be looking at it for what was right, what was wrong. We just want to know, okay, for this particular data point, how has it behaved? Over the last ten years or five years, it's only gonna be once we have that data that we can then start statistically analyzing it to figure out, okay, well, what's reasonable for a five-year projection in terms of the volatility of that particular line? We'll do that both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. Our whole objective here and we do a lot of pension work and again, we're not actionaries. But the reason we do pension work is because we're really trying to bring what is a very complicated concept into a conversation level where you can make good policy decisions. You can understand it enough to say, okay, that's gonna be a failed flaw of the city if our CalPERS projections are indicating we're getting paid on five million dollars more within five years. How do we prepare for that? You won't, you can't control it. If CalPERS is gonna do its own thing, if it has some great earnings and great returns, that's, that's great, right? Christmas came early. Those future payments might be a little bit lower, but if they've done what they've done the last couple of years, people who thought they were in good shape or, you know, already seen, hey, so that's where we want to make sure that as part of this project, we're, we're not just picking up, oh, well, let's just assume that's the one, that particular line item is gonna go up five percent a year. But, you know, we know that historically, it's actually this particular line item has done this, like, so high, what's the low? Our idea is what, what we generate out of these models is one dynamic so that it can be stress testing and it also can be played with around assumptions. If somebody wants to say, no, 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 I'm really optimistic on the city. I think this particular line item, a property test is an example, is gonna continue just to go through the roof and we're gonna see these numbers. You can kind of, you want to see an assumption it's much higher than, you know, what you put into the baseline. Transparency, and we'll show you at the end just kind of some of the dashboards that we've created in the past is, is really to have the, the supporting pages that if somebody wants to challenge any of the inputs, they can see them all in one place. And they can say, okay, well, I just don't think that this is the right number. Let's, let's change that. So we really want to make sure that everything is user-facing so that both at a technical level for staff and at a policy level for the commissioner, the council, that it's easy to get to, what does this do for me if I change this number? Next slide. So as John mentioned, what, what we're out of the gate going to be focusing on is not only the general fund and all of the identified funding funds that the city already has, but also on the enterprise funds. Those tend to, you know, think about those as their own little mini business, right? Water, sewer, the golf course. Some of them actually operate in a balanced environment. You set water rates, you set sewer rates such that revenues exceed expenditures and allowing you to reinvest in your enterprise. We have yet to find a community that runs a golf course that's actually not subsidizing you. So, you know, we're interested in looking at your particular situation to see, okay, how is that work? What kind of investment has the general fund in the city had to make in that enterprise fund? So that will be another one of those funds that we'll want to really do some projection work on to see, well, how does that affect the general fund in years three, four, or five? If certain things within the golf course are, you know, need to happen. And I will say that, just as another example, not to pick on golf course, but we're doing some work in Walla Creek right now up in the area. But they've got the same situation. They love their golf course. They, there's a lot of pressure from the community to reinvest in the golf course, but there's no revenue to invest there. So we're trying to figure out how do we invest general fund money into the project or into the golf course such a way that maybe we can raise the green fees or accelerate and have more tee times that go on? Just, you know, is there a way to actually build that model to make it more sustainable? Not necessarily profit. Because it may never be profit. Next slide. Just a little bit more refinement. Again, we're gonna really try to do this, we, we're saying at a high level because we truly believe that it does not make a lot of sense to spend staff time, consultant's time focusing on certain line items that really aren't moving the needle significantly. So you could, you can go in and you can pick one particular line item and say, well, yes, we want to spend a lot of time analyzing that, but if it's only going to change your numbers twenty thousand dollars a year, it's probably not gonna be any of its time, right, to talk about that particular test. There will be significant, and they may be groups or particular funds that will move the needle when we look at what's the, you know, what's an optimistic projection and what's a conservative projection? And you'll see very clearly, okay, we're talking about millions of dollars here in this scenario where we have a low and a hot. So let's focus on, let's, let's pay attention to what we can do about that revenue line or that expenditure item. Uh, next slide. You all know what your existing revenue sources are. Those are the taxes, the fines, fees, and permits. You've got the buckets that are coming out of community development and all of your other services that we'll even think about that more as an expenditure side, but there are certain revenues that do come in, lager fees and some of the smaller stuff. And then use of property, right? This is that passive stuff that a lot of times just, just kind of gets ignored. But when you think about like rental income, well, we had that lease with this nonprofit who's using a city facility and it's just been a lucky year. Okay. Maybe that we should revisit. It might stir some feathers, but it certainly is something that can, that can be looked at. Uh, next slide. On the expenditure side, as, as John mentioned earlier, you know, we will be getting all the data from the city and we call it a data dump that will, should have all of these line items and we'll go back as far as we can to really figure out something like, oh, the CalPERS UAL as an example. What has historically were those payments? And, and then using the CalPERS tool and the information we have coming out of Sacramento, what do we really think that's gonna look like? That projection as an example looked totally different than, you know, your holiday wages and benefits line, right? It's gonna be much more methodical and kind of more in line with what your MO you may show or your salaries show. On the O and M, we don't pretend to be experts on, you know, where the cost of computer equipment is going or any of these. So we're going to, to put together some assumptions based on what we've seen hopefully over ten years because we want to really isolate the pandemic effects and the inflationary effects that we've had since twenty twenty. So if you say, well, just go back and look at five years, well, really, you could argue that's only two good years of data, eighteen and nineteen, because twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two were just out of control in terms of what you might have been paying for any of these items. So when we think about the expenditures, that's where we really want to try to go back and, and go as deep as we can to make sure we've got some of the noise diluted that we otherwise might see over the last couple of years. Uh, next slide. So how, what are we envisioning our process to look like? As I've mentioned, our due diligence and our data dumps that we'll be getting will all be really set up for us in populating some of the models and some of the tools that we have internally. At that point, we think of it as a very iterative process. So whether it's with staff, whether it's with the commission, we will come back with, you know, version one point O, version two point O, until it gets close enough that it's ready for prime time. And only at that point then is there a real good discussion about, okay, well, here's the model that we think is, you know, sixty percent built, kind of like, you know, architectural design drawings. Let's now think about, is it going in the right direction from what the output is? From what assumptions you're using or do we need to scrub it, send it back through the meat grinder and come back with something that's more refined? And we want this to be an iterative process. As a consulting firm, the last thing I ever want my firm to do is generate a product, a document that just gets shipped. And unfortunately for most consultants, that's what happens, right? They do a study. It's talked about, it's approved, and then it's burnt. It just doesn't get implemented. We want these models to be dynamic. We want them to be used by staff. And we don't own them when we're done. This is a, you know, a model that can be handed over and being utilized by the city, by anybody within the city. So that, it's important for us to make sure that that internal process gives everybody the majority of folks what they want so that it can then be finalized and presented out as, you know, a working. The next slide, that might be, what we're going to have this model do is generate graphs and tables that can either be shared in public through meetings or even potentially put up on the city's website. We've had a couple of clients who said, yeah, no, I, we do a quarterly update to the community. We'd love to have this dashboard be part of what goes out so that people can see where we're going, right, or where things are trending now. And if we have to, we'll update the model six months from now or next year and that'll go up. So it becomes a consistent tool that people start to want to look at because they can compare it. What did it say last year? Oh, wait, why is year five now look different than it did last year? Well, some new assumptions, yeah, I think that. Uh, next slide. Real quick, go ahead, next slide. So th- these are what we call some of our dashboards or our front ends where you can see, the idea being you can populate any number of revenue streams by any assumption you want and immediately see what that does to balances and structural deficits and, and, you know, where expenses and revenues make up. So it's just an easy way, very quick way on one screen to be able to play and say, oh, okay, again, my word magnitude. This is where some of these line lines, just because the data points aren't, it's just not a significant number. It's ten thousand, it's a hundred thousand. You know, you can play all day long, you know, growth assumption on that, and it doesn't move the bar. Then you pick one, you know, like, sales tax. And you say, well, I could only grow it two percent and you'll just watch it rush, right, the graph? So it's, uh, for those of us who are numbers geeks, it's really kind of fun to be able to say which, which variable is actually having the biggest impact on the overall, you know, performance or projection of the, of the city. Uh, next slide, I think we have a couple other examples. Looks the same bar graphs, right, when we talk about what happens to reserves? Again, it's, we think about in the conversation earlier tonight about the idea of balanced budget is great. Revenues over expenditures equals zero or greater than zero. Okay, you know, stamp, you know, check that box. But the impact on reserves and where your fund balance goes is critical to fiscal sustainability. And again, we take it even one step deeper because we think just because you haven't spent the money, doesn't mean you don't have a liability. So if there are deferred infrastructure, deferred capital work that you know needs to get done, but you're not treating it as an expense, you know, that's, that's not good. And so you want to have those reserve funds showing, well, yeah, but half that reserve fund is going to get eaten up by your storm drain project. You just haven't spent the money, right? So we want to, we want to identify that. Next slide. And this is really busy, but we always like lots of colors. So in this case, all we've simply identified is we were stacking all of the different revenue sources on top of each other. Yeah, from a magnitude perspective in this example and kind of see, oh, in, in this case, the less or a lighter orange, right, is a pretty big revenue source. So that's the way to play a much bigger factor in how an assumption change on that particular revenue line would be much different than that little black item, which is your transportation. So, uh, anyway, some more examples of, of what we've done for dashboards. And here again, you're, you're, you're working, so all the dark blue is hard data that's been entered, so we're not playing with that. We're not trying to change it because we know that that's historical. But we can certainly say, well, what do we think going forward? We want this to, to look like. We are not going to get, just full disclosure, we, we are not anticipating that we're going to spend any significant amount of time doing deep economic analysis on the city's tax base to know that in two years, I know this isn't true, but I'll just say, you know, oh, well, we have Costco or Cardeoshop coming online in twenty twenty-five and therefore we're gonna see, you know, our revenues jump up. We're not, we have not been past that and that's not what we're going to be doing. We're really going to try to use historical data as our reason to say, okay, now what is a reasonable protection? You know, one number going forward. We can build the model to say, if you want to assume a couple of years of five percent growth and then we're gonna get out of this pseudo recession, so we want to assume seven in year three, the model can't do that. So over a five-year period of time, we can have different assumptions for different years. But we're not going to be, we're gonna respect the city's resources and not spend, you know, tens or hundreds of hours trying to analyze what could be different scenarios for the next five years. I think that's probably right. So with that, happy to answer any questions or, you know, any additional thoughts to where we're, we're thinking of gonna go with this model.
I understand that creationist model and developing prior to forecast, you really work in the finance department, city administration, getting all input from them. And patient quality forecasting. Once you've done that, then this, you will educate the staff here in the city how this model works, this model that they're employing. Correct.
Yeah, we will, we will want to make sure, again, we don't want it shelved. We don't want it stored on a server in some folder that nobody can remember or find. In our minds, we will not succeed if we don't have a model that people like.
Basically, it's a financial forecasting, a budget, we use a financial forecast and an economic forecast for the city as well as a budget forecast. So it's a model that the finance department view for the budget in the one-year, three-year, five-year, whatever the things may be. In most cases, it's a budget, it's a year, this will be a year, and this model will connect with this. And having a model that they don't.
Yeah, that's, that's actually a really good point. I think the way we think about it is it becomes kind of a guardrail. Right? So the, the model actually isn't going to tell you what next year's budget should be because that's going to be on finance to, to come back with a balanced budget based on our conversations with departments and, and city priorities. But then what we'll do is, you know, you'll drop that into the bottle and they'll say, what did that just do to our five-year projection? Right? Did that, is that, did we not see something that we, you know, had in our projections from last year? Because that's where this model, you know, on a rolling forward basis becomes very powerful to catch things that you're absolutely right. You're doing budgeting on an annual basis and this is why a lot of cities have kind of gone to the two-year budget, right? Because then at least it gives you a chance to look out a little bit further and capture expenditures that you, you, well, they're not in this year's budget, so we'll just deal with the next year. But on a five-year looking forward, take that budget and drop it into this forecast and then see, does it do any bellicle? Right, or any flash your run. A good point.
Thank you, thank you, the word. I was looking for that level of, um, granular. Focus on both the revenue side and the expenditure side and see. Really, where, where we are and where we're going. I was looking through the slides, um, I saw you hit a lot of areas that's concerned about including utilities. Uh, and insurance, um, because those are just in contract consulting fees, because those are just big dollar items that, uh. Weren't wanting to get captured. I wanted to add, I completely agree, by the way, on the reserve issue. I think there's been too much focus on keeping the fund balance, like, a certain number instead of understanding the excess reserves. And if you have a really strong, fair understanding of. How we're doing on the budget and the forecast, then we can also make decisions having use of excess reserves. Instead of doing the deferred. You don't, like, we now are deferred, it looks like, we've been doing it for a long time. Yeah, we've been doing it for a long time. But that's exactly why I wanted to get to this little detail so we can stop to, you know, and I should start using that excess. And say, you shouldn't, I mean, you shouldn't leave away money and using it for capital projects this whole time. Instead of now, it's like. Yeah, we gotta do all the streets, this hasn't been done. Um, and our claims went up, but looking at this and other things went up because, you know, streets and trees. And so we deferred those projects, um, so now we have to do them, I'm just taking, we've been going for it. Yeah, slap motion. Um, I do have a question on, uh, we're looking at a large development. And the city's mandatory hard development. So how to build that in? I know it's something that's not historical, but. Um, because I think my, one of my anxiety areas is the cost of development the city has to take on. As far as these certain infrastructure type costs, if they bring in, you know, two thousand units, what would that mean for water, sewer, electrical? Uh, and what should we be looking at as far as development fees or how do we? Think through that.
That's actually a great question. And we, and we have a lot of smaller, uh. What would be traditionally infill type communities, right? They're, they don't have a lot of undeveloped land, and now we're having to shoehorn. Two thousand units or seven hundred units in some of these little teen tiny towns that we work with, and it's. That, the, the number one thing that you need to be paying attention to is. To get ahead of that on that development impact fees. Like, we, we, we have communities that haven't, either don't have impact fees. Or have fees that they set back twenty years ago, right? And they've just been.
We're in that position. That, that's supposed to be a lot of anxiety.
So, so where you're being forced from, you know, a mandate perspective to. Allow development or allow, you know, dense development that will significantly impact utilities. Uh, as well as roadways and everything. Getting ahead of that from a pure impact fee study perspective is quick because. It's going to be a revenue source that you otherwise would not have. That you're going to have to spend on, I mean, you don't get to make money. And it doesn't, this isn't money that drops to the general fund. But it is money that goes to CIP that otherwise would come from. So it's a, it's a very smart approach that. I would say. Ninety-five percent of the cities we're talking to right now are saying, we've got to get ahead of this because if we, because that's a process, right? To do an impact fee study and it takes staff time, it takes a consultant to really, and you can't make money out of it. You've got to. Value engineer the cost of the impact so that you can set that way appropriately. That process is just like water and soup, and it's going to be nine months to a year to get done and. You don't need developers who are coming in right now and just saying, well, I'm entitled this. Three hundred unit project on that little third of an acre and you can't.
Yeah, and then.
Yeah, so it's, that's a good point.
It's tiny for mighty.
Right? And the streets are a liability. And the streets are a liability.
You haven't hit a pothole recently, okay?
Okay, that's actually a lot of what I've said is what I've been, um, looking for, and it's, um, happy to see, I want to see what. I love the data dashboard.
I love the data dashboard.
Pardon? Uh, I have a thoughtful and useful question, if you would permit.
Okay, yeah.
So, my name is Josh Bennett, it's my pleasure to meet you. There is talk, and there has been for twenty-five years in the community, of using the general fund. To generate capital improvements. Saving the trouble, there's no general fund money to do that, up, above and below a deficit level that still people don't really understand. Express to us, question I know the answer to mostly. What is the state of using a general fund in terms of getting approval for its full face and credit in bodily?
Well, I mean, if you're talking about raising capitals for projects, you know, the, the first option is to go to the community, ask for a general obligation. Right? We, we've got cities that have that for streets. Uh, for parks and obviously for public facilities. So, uh, a geo bond requires two thirds approval. If it never hits your general fund, right? This is a property tax that's collected. And is used to pay debt service on bonds. So it's a, you know, it's a wash, so it's weak and it gets you your capital projects then. Um, that is the only full faith and credit that you have for, um. For an investor to know that. Absolutely will pay. Otherwise, it's doing something back by the general fund. And right now, for all the reasons we're talking about, you know, we would not argue that you have capacity inside of your general fund. To take on a debt to, you know, to deal with capital improvement. You, 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 if you say, well, we've got an extra five million dollars a year, what, what's the highest mess use of that line? That's a whole different.
So, great, please keep that, cut that away, and as, as, as we progress the process, if you hear multiple different versions, we want to hear that. I, I think most people. Thank you, um, anything else, Dan? Only thing I would ask is, I, I like, I like your reports a lot. Um, however, um, when we use those reports to the, uh, city council. I would think we might want to make those more of a, um, dashboard.
Yes.
A little less complex because, um, I, I, some of our city council people are going to look at that and, uh. It's, it's good, raise more questions than it's going to answer. But just whatever you, whatever you tradition. No offense intended. Any other questions first? Great, thank you, uh. Craig, you're welcome to stay with us, uh, otherwise, uh.
Looking forward to hearing Ken's, uh, update on your sales tax. So, Ken.
Yes.
Uh, can you hear us? Because we can't hear you yet.
Uh, I hope you can hear me now.
Can you turn the volume up?
Uh, I can turn mine up. I don't know if it's something you want to do. Uh, let me, let me try that again. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen if that's all right, um.
Sorry, guys.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Anything, anything to host?
No.
So let me do that, um. And I will get my slide deck going. So it's a pleasure to be with the, uh. The finance commission this evening, and let me just, uh, grab. Uh, this to get going. And I probably have to switch, um. Switch sides here, so. You see that? Is that good? You see the main slide there?
For benefit of people like myself who don't know, you and don't know how you came to be part of our, our conversation.
Oh, sure. Uh, well, John asked me to do, but I think you're asking a longer question, um. And so we, uh, our company, it actually leads into the next slide. We, um. We've been around for, um, forty years, um, and providing. A variety of services on the revenue side to local governments, primarily cities, but we do a lot of work for counties and special districts. And really the goal is to ensure that you're understanding all your revenues, that you're capturing all your revenues. That you're entitled to, and we do a lot of work around auditing and forecasting. So, um, your staff have been using. Our property tax and sales tax data for years. In order to help build your budgets. And so I'll walk through a little bit of that tonight, uh, just to help you, um. Understand that, but that's, that's really what we've been doing. And I want to walk through. Uh, just some general things around sales tax this evening, but then I want to get into some specific. Uh, numbers that relate to both your sales tax and your measure A revenues, and then we'll, uh. We'll also spend a little time, um, working through, um. Any questions that, that the commission may have? So let me do that. So first thing I want to show you, and, and I hope this shows up well on the screen. I don't really know what you're looking at, so, um. Realizing that you're in a, an E O C room, but this is a breakdown of your.
Engineering malfunction.
Sorry?
One second, Ken.
Okay.
Okay, I think you're good to go. Thank you.
Okay. So you should see a, a slide up there with your tax rate on it, at ten and a quarter percent.
Yeah.
And, and what I'm trying to just show you, we do this often at these kind of meetings, just, there's a lot of components. To a sales tax rate. Some of them belong to the state, as you see on the top row. Some of them are county specific. Uh, and that's going to be true of things like Prop one seventy-two, although you get a little piece of that. Um, but I'm really going to focus the conversation tonight on your sales tax, which is one percent. Of that ten and a quarter percent rate, and then your measure A revenues that started, uh, about three and a half years ago. And that's a voter approved measure, an additional, uh, three quarters of one percent rate. The shaded blue box that's down here a little lower is trying to show you, there's a lot of, uh, what are called override taxes. Uh, that have been voter approved. And the reason I want to point out this chart to you is just kind of walk through a couple of things that are really important as you're. You know, we're talking to Craig and thinking about your financial modeling and health. Um, there is a statewide limit to raise taxes. There's a base tax rate of seven and a quarter percent. And then there are statutory, uh. Definitions in the revenue and taxation code that allow. That seven and a quarter percent to go up another two percent or gets to nine and a quarter, which you'll see at the bottom of my slide there. You might wonder, well, how, how is it that South Pasadena's rate is higher than a statewide cap? And that's because there's been special legislation passed. Both for measures R and M for Los Angeles County, and there are, these taxes are levied in. South Pasadena, uh, that don't apply against the cap. So there is really a hard nine and a quarter percent cap with these two half cent overrides for measures R and M. And I, I put all this up here really most significantly to tell you on the left side there at the bottom. That there's no current cap space to raise sales taxes further in South Pasadena. You're at the cap. Doesn't preclude you from pursuing legislation to do that. But absent that, you wouldn't have the, uh, the revenue and tax code authority to consider raising your tax rate. So I want to talk a little bit, you know, we get into a lot of conversations about, you know, online sales and how money is allocated. And so. Um, it, unfortunately, a lot of this is fairly complex, and I'm trying to simplify it. For your benefit this evening, but sales taxes are generally thought of as. You know, businesses in your town, your restaurants, your general retail stores, your gas stations and the like, they hold a permit. They, they levy that ten and a quarter percent rate. And, and the one percent value that you get, that I pointed out earlier, comes, all of that one percent value comes back to you locally. Um, there's a portion of taxes that are deemed to use tax, um, that are principally tied to. Uh, products that are shipped in from out of state. And so those taxes don't go directly to your sales tax portion. And I'm going to give you a little different narrative here when we get to measure A, that they go into what's called a county pool. This is a regulatory process. That the state agency, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. Put together decades ago. And so they kind of look at where these products are shipped. They get dumped into LA County. LA County has a pool, just like the other fifty-seven counties in California. And then those revenues are divided up based upon a formula. Which looks at how much revenue is getting generated out of your merchants in South Pasadena. Compared to the total amount of revenue that's coming out of LA County. So at the bottom there, I'm trying to tell you that there's a. Portion of your revenue that goes into the pool and you get about less than one cent on a dollar. And that's. That's not atypical for a community of your size and, and your tax base. Um, there has been a substantial amount. Of online growth in the last four years. Particularly related to, uh, Supreme Court decision referred to as Wayfair, where there's been a lot more taxpayers. Paying into the system and a lot of that's gone into the pools. So all boats have ri- have risen. Uh, with, with the onset of, uh, AB one forty-seven, which was the enabling legislation for that. That Wayfair action. So let's look at your, your actual tax results. We take data. For you, like all our clients, the count here would be the number of. Uh, sales tax permities. These wouldn't be all your businesses, but those that are paying sales tax. Is that count number? And we, we group these into some clusters. Hopefully, a lot of this seems intuitive. You know, restaurants would be obviously, um, places that you're familiar with, walking around town and eating. You can see how significant the pool's number is, uh, in total here, uh, for, um. Just for the year of FY twenty-two, twenty-three, it's, you know, it's the second largest category. And these are not taxpayers located within South Pasadena. And then we kind of go down the line. General consumer goods would be your. Your retail stores, your jewelers, uh, uh, some home furnishings, those kinds of things. Food and drug, uh, service stations, I think seems obvious. There's a bit of building and construction revenue, and then business and industry is also thought of as business to business sales. And you have very little auto, you don't have car dealerships or anything. So. Now, the results for this last year, this is, um, absent deducting any administrative fees from the state, but the gross. Taxes that were generated, there's a little over two point nine million. Uh, that was better, uh, than the two point seven eight of the prior fiscal year, and in totality, it was up about four percent. You can kind of see. How the various, um, industry groups moved around year over year. So we get to peer down on the data a little bit. We have to be careful that we don't step over some confidentiality restrictions, but we can cluster. A lot of information and, and kind of just give you a sense of, um. Uh, putting some more refinement into some of the higher concentration areas that generate your sales tax revenue. I don't think, again, this will be a surprise to you. Your casual dining, these would be sit-down establishments is your top. Producing segment last year, fuel and service stations, which don't have a lot of, but they do generate a lot of sales tax revenue. Uh, and then we get into grocery stores, home furnishings, uh, and you can kind of see the other categories here. You know, there's, as, as I think through, like, comparing how twenty-two, twenty-three. Results, uh, measure up against the prior fiscal year, there's certainly inflation. Baked into a lot of this, I, I often use the example of shrinkflation, particularly if you go out to eat. You're, you're either paying more or getting less or both. Uh, on menu items. There's been a very strong desire, kind of post pandemic, for people to go out and eat. So that's true whether they're driving through. Quick service would be, uh, what you would think of as, as drive-through or. Uh, those kinds of restaurants, um. Service stations have been a function really more, not so much of consumption, but of pricing, which has. Been pretty volatile in the last couple of years, and it certainly spiked about a year and a half ago. Uh, cooled off a little bit at the very end of this twenty-two, twenty-three year. Uh, but we see that trending up in the current year. Had some very strong, uh, results from your interior design businesses. That are in your home furnishings group. And the lumber decline, uh, is similar to fuel where prices really went nutso, um, about a year and a half ago. Price for a board square foot of lumber was a, an, a record. Price for a board square foot of lumber was a, a record high. And some of that has naturally kind of course corrected, and that's, that's a function of the feds playing around with interest rates and other things, trying to get inflation down and prices under control. So let's look at measure A. So first thing I want to point out is you have a lot more taxpayers, and that's because these local approved measures spend a lot more effort capturing what is called delivery or destination revenues. So for your restaurants and things like that where people walk in and they're, they're paying that three quarters of a cent on their menu bill or in, in your stores, but there's a lot of online businesses that, that ship products into South Pasadena, that generates general consumer goods revenue for you. Your residents, when they buy cars and they're registered at, at their addresses or their homes, which they typically are, that generates a lot of car sales related revenue for measure A. So that's very different than your sales tax. And then we get a little bit of different results here in business, industry and building and construction. So I'll walk through that. You could see this revenue actually generates, even though it's a lesser rate, generates a little more in dollars. A little, almost three point one million this last year, and that growth was three point four percent compared to the prior fiscal year. I'm just doing the same thing here, chopping up kind of these top ten business types, and you're going to see a couple of categories here that are not in the sales tax world. So I would tell you that the year was good for car buying for residents within South Pasadena. That number was up almost fourteen percent. And so as interest rates were rising and other things going on, that didn't seem to faze the activity there. And then we, we bucket together in this general merchandise to try to segregate away from your brick and mortar stores what a lot of the e-commerce online activity does. And so you would think of companies in that grouping like Amazon, eBay, Etsy, a lot of these folks. And so anytime orders are happening and products are getting shipped into the city, that's generating measure A revenues for you. So those are really the differentiators. A lot of these other groups are kind of, that are, are more on the ground, if you will, kind of moving in, in similar patterns as sales tax was. One of the things we like to do, we give this report to staff, and we like to just take a look at, well, what, what is sales tax general, is that one percent rate doing compared to the three quarter cent rate on your measure A revenues? And this just kind of gives you a snapshot, including the administrative fees of how these, how these compare. And, and part of the reason you get more value in that three quarter cent rate is because of this block here at the top. And I've kind of walked through that, but you can see how significant the auto and transportation numbers are for your local measure, which is not uncommon. And what I would characterize as a more of a bedroom community that doesn't have big auto dealerships and the like, and doesn't have, you know, huge lumber supply and other kinds of stores. So you don't have Lowe's and Home Depot. Some of that stuff gets shipped in, and even on the business and industry, when there's a need for medical equipment, generators, any number of things. Those end up all being good revenues on your measure A front. So this is, I think this is performing very well now that we've got three years of data, being able to look at measure A's results. So I want to kind of just shift a little bit, talk about some trends, considerations, just, these are more general in nature or broader. This is our statewide results for the quarter that we're just completing. And taxes were down about three percent overall. And then there, we break our data within California down into regions. So you can kind of see the, the results here vary a little bit. Southern California would include Los Angeles County. So the, the alignment there with state numbers is very, very close in the, in this recent quarter. So a lot of things that go into us trying to figure out forecasting and budgeting of your sales tax and measure A revenue. So these are kind of some of the building blocks. And I'll walk through a couple of examples of these. There's a, we do a full webinar every quarter that dives into some of this deeper, but you know, people today are certainly paying a lot of attention to things like inflation and interest rates. So let me just walk you through some things or kind of data that we gather to influence what we do. So one of the things that was clear during the pandemic, you know, these are house, these are kind of national household savings rates, which were running in the, you know, six to seven percent range, when nobody went to work and everybody stayed home and was uncertain of the future. Back in the early part of twenty twenty, those rates shot way up, way, way up, and then they've come way back down. So you can see more recently, they're back below five percent. So that's something to take into consideration when we think about people spending money, particularly on taxable goods. This graph, if you can see this, the, the light green line at the top is, is where we live. It's the durable goods sector. And again, there was a lot of, you know, stay at home spending on electronics and outfitting your office, home furnishings, remodeling. That has cooled off, and this darker green line has kind of moved into the non-durable goods category. That has bounced up a little bit. And services are continuing to kind of eat away to some extent at where the, where dollars were being spent on durable goods. You're all familiar with what the feds have been doing. So there's been, you know, a five hundred twenty-five percent basis point bump in interest rates. They passed on their last meeting. But certainly watching what inflation has done over the last year and a half, and how important that is to generating tax revenue, we're, we're paying attention to that. And then just a couple of things that are important, you know, as we think about the future of revenues for you. As weakened demand, you know, and things like general consumer goods, you know, apparel, shoes, any, any number of things. Demand puts a downward pressure on volume, but prices rising puts an upward pressure on your tax revenue. That's kind of what we've been through for the last year, year and a half, and I, I talked about things like lumber, but there's plenty of other examples. And then there's industries currently kind of going through price correction or price reduction. And so that's putting some negative pressure on sales tax revenues, not necessarily because demand has weakened. So I think in summary, I just want to tell you that, you know, I, I think overall, from a sales tax perspective, the numbers were good for the city, both on, on your sales tax and measure A. You had stable results. They, they were slightly above what occurred, you know, kind of within the county and across the state. They were on the order of three percent, both of those taxes above the estimates that we provide you that I believe staff puts in the budget. There's some things here we're thinking about in the current year. And I've touched on some of these, but we're definitely going to see a slowdown. We're actually on a statewide level, you know, forecasting a bit of a dip. See that here in a second. We have not been forecasting a recession, and it hasn't manifested itself, at least as far as sales tax revenues are concerned. Inflation is out there. There's plenty of world events that could season where the economy is headed. I think it's conceivable that there might be some more Fed fund increases, looking ahead into the middle of next year. The unemployment numbers, both nationally and in California, are still very good. They're not quite as low as they were a year plus ago, but there are some sectors struggling to fill jobs, meaning there's more jobs than there are people to fill them. There's some real cost pressures. There's new law, for example, in California and fast food restaurants, the minimum wages are taking effect, and I'm already reading about places like Chipotle and McDonald's anticipating price increases starting the first of the year. And then you can roll in the stock market and consumer confidence, a number of other indicators. So it's, it's a complex cocktail, but when we, we piece everything together, this is kind of what our statewide numbers have been, that the gray years up here at the top are actually the, the historical year over year changes. You can see here in the COVID year, there was a slight dip. People actually thought this was going to be much worse than it turned out to be. And then there was some sizable double-digit year over year increases in fiscal years twenty-one and twenty-two. When we get into real time and talk about F Y twenty-three, twenty-four, we think revenues will be down about one percent overall, and then just kind of work through a modest recovery, getting out to some more normal patterns in these outlined years in the two to three percent range in terms of growth. So, and this is the kind of data we use to guide the forecasting for the city, where we also can provide a five-year outlook on your sales tax and measure A revenues. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing and, and hope that you're still there. The screen is up. So I'm happy to answer any questions of the commission.
Yeah. Anyone? Ken, thank you very, very much. Appreciate this.
You're welcome.
So great.
Well, it's good to have this kind of information. This is stuff Craig is going to be asking for of staff. And we're happy to partner with him as you move forward in that effort as well. So appreciate being with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Great. You're leaving us?
I'm going to sneak out, yes.
I know the good stuff is happening now.
Yes. I mean, this is the planning also collaborating with finance and not very conceived. Looking at zoning allows for mixed spots and use density that's bigger. Where you can have in a little small pocket grocery stores or things that you know, you see that in dense cities, you know, and those are possibilities like the, you know, like the yeah, the little bodegas, which actually makes your life easier because it's sort of a compartment, their grocery sort of you'll get and the whole thing just is a possible revenue source in the future. And also, I know this is a part of the transient tax concept for things for the Airbnb to actually, more to minimize Airbnb's so that we can have a quarter housing. And as far as building housing, some good dreams.
Right. One of the things that they touched on, you know, with the development of this encounter. So that will have an impact on our operations cost. It was higher rent care, infrastructure, you know, there's, there's a lot of costs related to that development. So, you know, the, the impact fees are going to be a big, big factor of driving that down. Yeah. You know, you go from whatever, from a single family home to all of a sudden you've got ten units. You've got ten times the wear and tear on the infrastructure. Cost.
Yeah, I think that this impact is, since you're having a competition that's we, we will be doing, so next year, John does have in his project to launch a study of cities in general. He's had something we've had on our front. And it's something we definitely need to do. I think we may want to look at expanding the scope of that. So we also do. I don't know. The impact needs to be, is that's assuming it's coming up so quickly. But I don't know when the last time the city did it. So I think we need to take a look and see when was the last time we did that. But I, I've heard some that they can do in departments. And in some communities, as you go through that process, it's also on some of the larger development projects. Where I'd like to expose where we actually do development, we want to do developers. Where then with certain conditions, where they have to pay for less part of what they're doing, that's going to have a greater impact with each size of these. For example, you know, you're going to have more cost per service for budget. What does that mean for fire safety? So does it mean for just public safety in general? So those conversations are starting to happen in the staff level, because if we're talking about reducing that several units, it's only realistic that we start talking about the passive and other things. So it's, it's really good timing that, you know, all this is, all the conversations are starting, and it's all that they go hand in hand with policies. And I probably missed a bit of statements, but I mean, I think one of the concerns I've heard and agree with on child transphobia has been not having a modern tax space and just how that works with the non-profits that are not purchasing and, and being able to have the support, the infrastructure. I mean, that also goes to, you know, any of the other reasons. Where nonprofits purchase additional properties in a community that we're on a tax base, not we're on a tax base, you're going to run off. For that. I think setting with the word, your thought process that's going to be transplanted, space, I mean, not, I'm thinking the financial sites.
What I think is here, it's great luck that you're back there and seeing our job in this, that you're TA if there's finally. We're, we're looking to the cloud with the beginning of twenty-four. So really, we're kind of like dovetailing, guaranteeing financials. This, which was segueing into our mid-year, in our budget. So that, that's kind of the overall sequence and timeline in general.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
It is, it is great. Going to, some of them are being coordinated with in conjunction with staff. So I'm going to say, yes and no. So in some ways, they're going to look at what they'll do. But they're going to expand on it, and they're going to, they're going to go into a much more granular approach. In there. So my, my view is, in some ways, they'll probably have similar ending results, you know, that it would be more granular, more structured in there as opposed to a more high level. It's not really connected.
Still, the work will be a baseline. If you know, we're just completed and we're going to have this based on the feedback that you have provided at the last meet. That would become an attachment to what everything else has energy advised to do. We didn't stand the scope framework stepping up to a larger scale part. And there was one piece that Craig didn't mention that I, I'm hoping that at the end of the exercise, we will also look at some futuristic thinking that financial modeling that we need to start looking about. We've got some, I think we just lost a bunch. We've got some projects we're talking about, we're doing quite a bit about streets. I do look to Craig in terms of also give us some advice in the end of the project of what are some things we should be looking at, future, or how we find out some of these large scale projects that we're all talking about. We just started being inside the million or whoever you're towards the I D is not going to cover that being infrastructure needs that we have. So I think that's maybe also added on to the work piece. We're looking at those forecasts, just the baseline. It was general output that we did. We have expanded the scope. So what he's done would be a separate document that would be, you know, everything he brings to you. But we're really looking at Craig. I think given that we're the C E O. Lord, he's right, but is that being a little more should get up to the twenty twenties. I, I think the position in the process is looking for a deeper level of detail, and I think that's what John has been, John and Sue, the entire team has given me that, so many different ways. But I think getting a firm where that's got the depth, I think that's the word I want to use, the firm has a depth that we need. Given our need, and I think the patient has asked some good questions that are also that kind of the process was asking, so that all of our stuff went over the funds. So I think it's the right timing and we're going to do, if we're going to do this initiative, I'd rather give our time and do it well. And have something, I, I think the fact that the model that we're being biased could also be something we do on our website. We're in the middle of redesigning, obviously, the website. It just, it's really good timing. It would be great to have that level of transparency.
And it's going to be nice, but the overall picture of the city is fine.
Not supportive.
Yes.
I think it's very good. And I also, because the, the C I P is really a big question. They, you know, it's just straight along this kind of street. You know, really, the general fund myself, the general fund can't support the C I P. We don't need that at all. You know, typically for having, you know, early type margins, you have two, three hundred thousand dollars. You know, typically for having, you know, early type margins, you have two, three hundred thousand dollars. You know, if that's grabbing you over a standard shows in in near, um, that's not going to cover anything.
Any other comments? Very good discussion, everybody. Thank you so much. Um, page number five, minutes from our finance commission meeting for June one. Uh, lastly, our D W S, what's the edits and impacts that we made for those? Did everybody have a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
We want to be announced that.
Yes, I will add that. Yes. That will be added.
I cannot be here.
Once credit for attendance.
I I will add that. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with with that amendment to the minutes, are are any other changes add or correction? Yes, they are. Would anybody like to make a motion to?
We do have one public comment on this item.
Oh, perfect, perfect.
Mr. Better?
Perfect. Thank you.
Not always going to your garden party.
No, sir, you're not.
I need to read this back in the record on on the minutes, rephrased by the city manager to their question of caution. The financial commission recognized the movement in the city of the city budget in the right direction. But they've identified a number of areas that we need to work on collaboratively between the council commission and staff. To identify strategies for improvements, ultimately reaching a place where we are not deficit spending. My comment to that is the time is now. And I I know in the culture that we have a positivity here. Talking about the future all the time. We may want to just slow that down. What y'all are up against in the deficit is making very hard decisions. In the very near future. It's not a pre, a future oriented exercise of how great something's going to be. These are discussions you can't have. The atmosphere needs to be correct. And I call upon the staff to bring their pledge, to bring in these these items for the discussion with great dignity. I asked for that of you. And I want to say something. The thing about simple she lot was this, it's an intellectual truth. She knows the answers before she asks the questions. Don't fight somebody. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Always learn something. I do. Make a motion for the. Approved over the next.
I'll do a roll call. Chair Giuliani.
Approved.
Uh, Vice Chair Ross.
Approved.
Commissioner Clay. Commissioner Elsner. Commissioner Finley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Again, you're now part of the cool gang.
Had a try, hardly get.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, there are days, right? Exactly. Uh. We have a best one report for Ju- July, August and September. Uh, what questions, uh, or what comments do we have about that? Overhead chance to do it. And Su-Lee, she's gonna help us. Your walk, stay there. Perfect.
So before I get to the question, um, July has already been converted into every second group. I just put in there for. So in here, I have August and September that I've not gone to until. So I wanted the permission to view.
Uh, let me think, you, we should be, we should be drawing our attention to.
Yeah. So one of the items that we changed because my stop and then we're kind of going over, you know, the projected expenditure does looks familiar. On the way that we've been doing it in the past. So we tried to look at what is the best way to. Do the projected, um, year to date effects limits. So what the conclusion of we can do, we'll look at clashes, go for the whole year. You know, average it out, what the average is per month and then we'll calculate the six plus the C P I that I get with yours. Euro. So the August C P I was three point three percent and the September C P I was at that. So that the numbers were kind of aligned of what with what we have for our projected.
So I have a question on the methodology because, um, looking at. Let me give you the detail that you put. Yeah, um, when we look at it, you see that we really big goal of. Our spending actually comes in June, like we said last year. So really, when you're talking this, you're actually trying to get a good sense of what your, what it means are for the next six months. And I think the average, uh, especially based on. You know, first couple of months isn't necessarily the best approach for that because it's not giving you a good sense of what's coming up. And so for instance, if you have the, I know you took out the nine million of the SIP, but I think the SIP is going to be coming out. You're going to do that nine million or spend, you're going to have that supported. So I know it's hard to like get. Exact, but I think we need to like figure out the process that brings it closer. So like in this case, like if you think it's going to track very similar to, um, last year. Then if you do want to do a coach that, whether it's the. It shows that basically in June, you're going to be gigantic. You know, saying that this, this.
Being.
No, but it's, but it's tiny that you're putting these. So I guess you're talking about this stuff because you're also. Yeah, it's my understanding that the. Nineteen million to twenty million in June was not a cash.
Correct. Yeah, so.
So that's why it's not.
There's a lot of rules in there. Okay, so. So normally what we're doing is we we keep our E P has to be able to open, uh, through July and August. And then so we end up posting those back to June. For transactions that relate for goods and services that were related to the twenty three fiscal. So, so we have that component. Then we have an additional component where we're doing accruals. Uh, that are also going into these numbers here for overall cost. So, so. Yeah, so but to your point, you are correct in that.
Yes, and then.
So, so to your point, you you are correct that it's it's not really a liquidity kind of a standpoint. It's, it's, here's all these costs and we're reporting it in the final period of the fiscal. So if, uh, if the recommendation is, you know, that you would like just to see the pure cash. Own it through June. We can do that. Just realize the caveat that is it's it's not going to really tie to our overall expenditure for the year. If we're doing averages.
Right. I mean, I guess.
So, so I don't know.
Methodology, I think, is just for her.
Yeah.
You know, when you do the reporting, it's always like, what is the report training? It's how you would look.
Yeah.
So that's, that's where I'm just like, he's looking at this and if there's no notation on the nineteen.
Yeah.
Wow, beautiful. How good I know this.
Sure, sure. No, 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 absolutely. Well, there's a signal from the next page saying that sixteen thousand five hundred or sixteen million five hundred eighteen seventy one thousand. In C I P was included in the adopted budget expenditure. It's that. No, actually, to to address, uh, kind of Commissioner Wass's comment on there. What we could do is on the the June number, we could actually break it down into. The cash disbursement component that occurred in that month versus the accruals that occurred since. You know, so that you see, so you still see the overall nineteen million, but you really see a better sense of what, what the cash component.
Right. And I think a lot of it's figuring out with for the the six month projection that you're having when you think this is happening. So you think. That you're gonna spend sixty million in. Everywhere or something.
Yeah. Yes.
It's just, you see, I remember, I think it was a. It's just me, so you percent. So it's, but I, the math on. It's just, and I think a period of just.
Thank you, Sean. Brett, one last question to ask you, um. Why do you have such a large? I I understand accrual very well.
Sure.
But I, I, why, why is it such a large amount in the last one?
So typically, um, it's a normal condition with the city deficits. Um, and usually what's going on there is we're, we're trying to wrap the year. So we're, for example, we're reaching out to public works and there always going to be a posted channel for the cities. And we're saying, hey, reach out to all your vendors, especially related to like C F P, have you made your contracts? Get your invoices in and we need to, you know, we need to wrap up the year. And so we'll get a quite a bit of, I think it's worth onslaught, but. We'll get quite a bit of invoices all of a sudden because we're trying to close the year and and we're now. Forcing you to say, reach out to your vendors because we know you have outstanding invoices and we need to.
Not, it's a, it's a, it's a. Is a large, uh, large follow-up that is with vendors not getting invoices or is the department not, not?
It's, it's, it's not really the department's not counting for invoices. It's usually the the vendors, especially, especially when you're talking about construction. And activity. Uh, not so much at the city. I've had horror stories where I I'm just about ready to issue the financials. And all seven forward years, a seven hundred thousand dollar invoice. Part of a major street. Project and. Had no idea at this time. And and so you can run into those kinds of dynamics, uh, at year end. We don't really have, we ha- I haven't seen that here. But just in general, those types of things occur. And so it really ramps up which in.
And then also.
Yeah.
There'd be some policy in practice within the organization. That I would say that the partners would know, I mean, we know what working process is happening.
Yes.
And they would know, well, you know, I know the streets. This has been completed. We have received an invoice.
Yes.
If you implement or establish a policy in practice, you're in the process of really noticing we've won our invoice.
So sure.
Or, yes, yeah, you do the rule during that period, but you don't have any rules.
Right. So normally, um, you you can do that. It's, it's always been everywhere I've been, I I haven't seen any exceptions with it. It's always been incredibly difficult to get instruction firms to get. Across the board. It's, you know, you can count them, you can do all of this.
It's sort of in the period that is. Just so that you're even getting that new better idea. So it would just make men that remember this happened. But they have a sense of like, oh, this is how we would be spending. Thank you.
Yeah. It, 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 it's a tough thing. I don't disagree with you. It's just an execution of it. It's fairly difficult. That, that's, that's why you need to that question. Um, it is very difficult to get those kind of numbers. It 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 just, it just is.
Without, I think that we, 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 look at these numbers, we proceed to the fiscal year. Near nine most of this year, we're going to pass the year.
We do have, we do, uh, our projections. We do. So, so we do have, yes. So when we're doing, typically when we're doing our budget development. We're doing both a projection of what we expect to happen for that particular year. So like when we're doing the budget for twenty three, twenty four. We're doing also a projection of what we think is going to end for twenty two, twenty three. So in the budget document, you'll always see like a fun summary, if you will, and that's where you're seeing that information going up into. Uh, so we do have the projections there. And and then we need to do that because we need to have estimates of what we think our new fund balances are going to be. Uh, as we roll into the new fiscal year.
And you're talking balances in terms of. Of accruals.
Correct. Yes, that is correct. Yeah. So, uh, so with, within governmental accounting, there's two different rule methods. So for the governmental funds, you, they have what they refer to as a modified accrual basis. Um, and generally what that means is, is a measurable one is available. And so that we use a sixty day. Um, so if we, we have invoices that come in July and August. We book them into. That fiscal year. Generally, if they fall outside of that, then we report them into the new fiscal year, in this case, twenty three, twenty four. The caveat there is materiality. If all of a sudden we get some, you know, invoice at six hundred thousand dollars. The materiality of it is going to force us to put that in. Otherwise, it would be kind of a gross statement between the financial statements. The other funds, so the enterprise funds, the insurance fund, water, sewer, golf. Those are treated in full accrual basis. So for example, with the insurance recoveries. The only reason why they're being shown. As an impact of the insurance fund at the end of the year is because they are treated as a proprietary fund, an enterprise type of fund. And so it's full accrual. That's the only reason why we're doing that. Otherwise, if they, it was one of the governmental funds, it would be reflected in twenty three, twenty four, it would not be reflected.
The larger point is. As, as things get better, um, is moving towards more precision.
Sure.
Or the city's benefit to help that we have the decision. This said, the average, the challenge with it is it doesn't tell you, um, for the projections, it doesn't issue that it's actually. Expecting to happen, right? Um, as we, with the, the true, like, whole method, what number is working towards that precision.
Yeah, so, so the methodology is more linear, when you match all of these, is actually what it means. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just commenting on. One of the first things you say, Westway, the city county.
Yeah.
Denver County Works.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see the city of Pasadena, the finance department, this regard that, you know, that hand that stated handed. And I'd like to see the. Finance Department, City of Pasadena, work on implementing a policy to where you have good accruals. Continuing through the year. So that we get to the last month of the year, we can see this large.
Yeah, so, so the problem with that is, uh, there are some cities that do that. It it requires a tremendous amount of resources to do that. Can you do it? Absolutely. It's just a resource. It's a, really, it's a resource issue.
I was gonna, I was gonna.
Is it a manpower resource or is it software?
It's a manpower. It it's a manpower.
John, let me add to it. I I think it's definitely manpower because we've got departments who. Have several commissions and one staff person that's providing staff support for the entire department, who was also responsible for tracking the invoices and. Doing all the payment tracking. So it's, it's a significant effort. And unfortunately, we don't have staffing capacity. Typically, we would have one person each department that has just been working in P O's and requisitions. We don't have that. We maximize some of our positions so much that they're wearing multiple hats. Um, I need a point you you're making is a very valid point. That they should have practices in place that help us create better efficiency. So we're tracking everything on a regular basis and we're not leaving the. The last month of the fiscal year to get all the payments coming in. Um, that's definitely what our aim is. Uh, I think our struggle is having the capacity to do that at at that level where. It it should be pretty straightforward. We're notifying our vendors, we're letting them know, hey, we have a new C P L's from you. That's quite a bit of tracking. We just don't have a capacity to do that. Should that where, is that where we aim to be? Absolutely. Um, it's just going to take us some work to get there. I think the fact we've gotten to a good place where. For the most part, we think we've paid down family voices at the city college, going back several years. We're putting some really good measures in place and. going back several years, we're putting some really good measures in place and going back to centralizing our finance department. Because there was a few years where finance was being decentralized. And that's really all the work that John and Sudi and the entire team is doing is centralizing. Putting in the technical resources, the technology from the budget software, this this mechanism where we're truly going to centralize finance. Which had been that's recent for a few years. So I think in next year, we're going to see better practices being placed. And I would assume two years from now will be in that. Um, so the short answer is, you're correct. We should get there. We just are not at that place, possibly vice to achieve those results, but that should be.
Also, how we put it turns out that it's a.
Damn, I'm thinking a little bit of this idea of decentralized finance. Just especially true.
Yeah.
To decentralize the finance.
But but it has been, yeah. It's been centralized AP, AR, and it's across the board operationally. So I think the goal right now is we've, as I could think, we've put a sense of stability in place. Now we're at a place where we can start looking at operationally, what are those improvements we can do? So John and Sudi are dissecting, I would say, the different components of the finance department, trying to create those practices.
So I think like this report is just around, because that's what you need protections. We it's.
Yeah.
Really go ahead and do the job on the protections. So that it's there in the same year, like in the next six months. And if there's going to be, um, need to break any bonds at any point, uh, then what can I do for this? So it's not in this case, obviously, like this month, it's not an issue. Um, and it may not be this year, but it's just, uh, starting to get that filled in. So that in the event that we had to, uh, break some bonds, who was, say, the biggest possible ones, smartest.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. What can I pass you from the comment of this? Absolutely.
Zen, you had a comment.
Oh, I was actually just wondering, so for capital, is there kind of a you know, projection or the next, what six months?
For capital, capital, uh.
And like payment projections. Like, do they track like a projected payment out of that?
No, they they do not. Um.
Because they're probably the most lumpy of our.
They very much, they very much are. Um, what we're trying to do, uh, is starting with this fiscal year is really facilitate getting getting programs up and running at a faster. But that that's really been, I think, the thing of our existence and public works on capital improvement. Options. Um, as opposed to, you know, getting, you know, with the vendors, the, you know, getting them turning their invoices on a on a more efficient basis. Um, the, um, but it is, it is important to to note, especially if we're going to start ramping up capital improvement program activity, uh, to actually, uh, look at cash flows with those cash requirements. You know, so for example, if we're we're going to issue debt, you know, to to do infrastructure projects. One of the things, one of the requirements for, um, for tax exempt bonds is it's a general rule, you have to spend about thirty five percent of the bond proceeds in three years, maintaining tax exempt status. So then that's a really important thing. That means there's a lot of pressure on public works to start turning the projects at a fairly ambitious rate. Um, in their other watches, it gets in jeopardy, the investors, they 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 can use this. Um, as you see, they really say, okay, we'll do that on facilities, tax exempt.
I think, I think treasure cloud, what you're asking for is exactly where we want to be.
Yeah.
We're just not there yet. I think what John explained is right on as far as we've had a bottleneck in just trying to get the projects launched. Um, and also going back and looking at all of the grants that are in the CIP and doing all of the analysis of what grant goes to which account and what's still owed to the city and what we need to spend. I think we're getting to a better place than last week. We saw the award of our first major construction contract for CIP, one hundred million dollars H P projects. That was a huge effort, just getting that out and getting that started through several months. So I think as we get the ball rolling, um, I'd like to get to a place where we're doing monthly CIP meetings as city organizationally. Are we going to reach the projects? We're looking at finance and have really good information out on a monthly basis. That's how it works. The CIP does, at least that's what I'm used to. I'm used to monthly CIP on meeting with all the department projects.
Engine rescue ambulance response.
The the other thing, um, that I've noticed is, um, for example, some of the associations. Is I just simply call it cost going, it's one of his.
Eighteen eighty one, R eighty one, trauma, one seven four two, Pavilion Street in A Adam Park Avenue, Car, hey, Fred.
We have significant vacancies and actually that's one of my priorities to work with the director to create additional capacity if anything will happen because they're down.
Yeah.
That's a fun one. We need to bring in additional resources. There's there's just way too much. There's way too much going on. And we need a lot of grants to do projects along. We need more engineers, we need more project managers. So that's my.
Thank you. It's very helpful.
I love that. That's another question. Um, our trust needs certainly managed. So there are just some funds with waters and in the committees.
So the interest allocation is is generally based on cash balances to find. So that's simple. That's that's so, uh, water has a lot of cash, so it gets a lot of interest.
And then, um, I know this, Brad and I are looking at the insurance fund and seeing the relationships. Uh, that would have, which was, um, insurance fund.
Yeah.
Easy with the, they're getting. Liability.
Yeah.
Money to be able to set. The flow on that.
Yeah, so to. So with the insurance fund, the issues always wanted to do the cash. You know, um. So every mon- every month when we're doing the allocation, we're looking at cash balances on the, of the insurance fund. You know, typically, see, there's not a lot of cash. And so it's not.
You can't do it.
I got, yeah, yeah, until until now, but but, uh, yeah. Uh, and so because of that, a lot of agents have some now that.
Or it hasn't.
Right.
Yeah.
The cash, especially if cash was there.
Well, and the other thing a lot of a lot of agencies do always is we we never really want to show a negative cash position. So, uh, one of the accounting activities, which they prefer to do to do the funds, it's almost like you're 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 wanting one fund.
Right.
Money, but it's all coming from the general fund.
Right.
Always. And and so one of the things I explain with that is when we see a duty fund, that's money with general fund is is loaned to its other funds.
Right. So the the insurance fund, though, is the liability that's spoken to is discounted.
Yes.
And so the, you know, the thing you talk about importance to go ahead and have the interest earning on it so that money comes to in the future.
Yeah.
They're like, she's there.
Sure, sure. Right.
A longer conversation, isn't it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and that is, that is a very valid point, uh, with that in terms of, you know, cash management. Okay, we'll do the actual reports, but and the question is, when is the timing this really going to take place? And that's always going to be a difficult point. We can, we can say, well, the liability is broken down between short term and long term. So we can say, well, we can take some methodology and put the short term component of it. Long term, I'm not so certain how we we approach that.
Yeah, I think we we have a pretty.
Good thought about this stuff.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Sudi, is there anything else that I never believed that we were having this much discussion about this? Is there anything else we should be looking at?
I don't think so. Whenever the chief is that I go, I think.
So anything else you want to draw attention to? Any other questions before we, uh, pause the vote?
There, you do have a public comment.
We do, please.
Mr. Better?
Yeah, three minutes. I have the privilege of going through recovery of, uh, what I did in my second career after jail with Central Basin. Water District and Commerce and think about people in prison and the darkness, you know, with Central Basin. But I learned something really important, the value, the dollar value, you may hate any people, but listen to this idea of having a purchasing and contracts officer in an organization. I saw it there. I had been listening for three years to the same story of accounts payable problems. This contract did not work because somebody didn't do that. This position can revolutionize the movement of contracts from signature, from duplication, through talking to this department head, to go back and forth here to council. And take that away in partnership from your departments. In partnership, I'm not solving their AP problems. Okay, that's on a department. When you talk about cash flow relevant to decisions. When the conversations have gone on for so many times in my hearing about cash flow, about projection. This position plays a revolutionary role in the orderly conduct of a contract. The expenditures attached to it, the general ledger reports that are available to you later. I'm telling you, you can change the world with it. I saw it happen. I've never seen it in a city before. Apropos. I gave you information in June that says the Public Works Department is processing ten percent of every budget dollar. It has been for years. I made this suggestion a couple of years ago. Or I'm going to, and I express our desire and our attraction to nice shoes and coffee. The infrastructure's not there and hasn't been for two years now. Ted Gerber can only spend ten cents of every dollar. You have to look at what that means in terms of their function and the infrastructure that he's been good given to process contracts. I I was in awe of the person that did it at Central Basin. She was a tremendous coworker of mine. And I can't say enough about the idea. And I'm not asking anybody to add a new position here. There's been too much of that and it's been a little irresponsible. I'm talking about taking some positions out for this that will change your life internally, in particular in the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Josh. Anything else? I need a, uh.
So we need to sign.
Yeah.
Oh, I have a side comment.
Okay.
Usually they do the electronic, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we do need an approval. That's what you're asking for, right, Suli? Okay. So we need a, uh, motion to approve.
Just the.
Do you want me to break out?
Like a non-practice. Yeah, and I mean, I hope you want to do the the next one, the thing that is going to. We'll change the this.
Yeah.
Did we say the C P I, the C P I? Uh, numbers and like that, that's sort of. Um, yeah. I want to be something that's better than for you guys.
So we have a typo for fifteen, and then you're going to sign it. And then we need a motion to approve. So move second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Chair Giuliani.
Approved.
Vice Chair Rossi. Commissioner Quaid. Commissioner Elsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Finley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Robust discussion. Thank you. Really appreciate. Um. There has been a great deal of things about our calendar and our, who challenge our, uh, finance to take a look at it and come back to us with some adjustments. Uh, who's going to walk us through these adjustments? Sean, can you?
Yes.
Please.
I will want, want, uh, the center.
And on first left, John, I think there are places where we need, we may want to either eliminate or at the very least, uh, just hold the dates without as sensitive versus a permanent.
Sure.
Perfect. If you walk us through what we're looking at now.
So, um, so within the calendar, we have the November eighth today, right? We're about the twenty ninth, which is a special meeting. Uh, December twenty first, we have, we're scheduling a regular meeting. Uh, then rolling into January, uh, we have a regular meeting on the twenty fifth. And it's anticipated at that meeting is when we'll be presenting, um, our year-end financial reports, other than financial reports.
Okay.
Um, and on February twenty first, uh, we're scheduling, uh, a a joint meeting with City Council for mid-year. So we're moving mid-year out from March to February. Um, we're, we're recommending the twenty ninth that we drop that or leave that as like a, uh, uh, you know, like a pending or kind of status for that, simply because it's, it's almost like right after the mid-year.
Can I, can I, uh, suggest that, uh, we, uh, hold the date on our calendar just in case something comes out of that jointly? Or we do need to come together as permission. But, uh, assuming that everything has been real as planned, then, uh, we'll just give that date back to our shelves. Okay?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
I might ask a question on the December twenty first date. I think there's anything pressing on that date.
There.
We have elections, right?
December twenty first?
Yeah.
We can. We just reelect or choose vice chair and chair for the upcoming year.
And that seems like to do that four days before major holiday.
Yeah.
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 We are making ourselves available, but it's under discussion of the mission, maybe we'd like to have that or not, because we can certainly.
Measures? I I have family coming in.
Well, let's see this. Do we even have a forum for the meeting? Um, to be official, may we do a motion to cancel this meeting?
Okay, uh, I make a motion that we cancel the December twenty first. You sign it. Do a roll call for it.
Chair Giuliani.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rossi.
Yes.
Commissioner Quaid.
Yes.
Commissioner Elsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Finley.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
There you go. Uh, well.
Um. The, um.
March twenty.
Yes, so the March twenty eighth is going to be, uh, the budget kickoff. And we're anticipating having the actuaries back as we discussed in the September meeting. Uh, to have a presentation by the actuaries as a kickoff to the budget process.
Engine response, altered level of consciousness, ALS.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things is looking at doing the work plan along the calendar. So we learn life processes for any who we're really going to have a calendar that has very specific items that we do every year.
Sure.
You know, and kind of decide, uh, this is going to be reviewed in Jan- like, I kind of can start in January is when you're preparing for the budget.
Yeah.
Where do you mean that, like, usually of course we start in December, right? Because it's easy to see if everybody.
Okay.
March. So that by the time we get to budget, you're all prepared.
Yes.
Yeah. So we have, like, look at the, look at the, like, we just have the sales activity and we're going to do that. We can move the calendar.
More periodically.
More periodically or more because we get into budget season.
Yes.
So having something that's a very regular finance, like we said, realizing finance.
You're not going to let that go.
Really, I know, I'm pretty sure. And I say, okay, starting this time for all finance commissions in the future, these are the type of things we should be looking at changing in the middle of March.
Eighteen eighty one, pretty good, we are in.
Budget is, it's there. And I think that's one of the things that like went into it, which was. And then the the work plan wise then becomes things that might get added, but there's an understanding every year. Because the measures also will be changing on, so we did, we need to understand these.
Worth it. Yeah.
And the the different.
Timing.
Okay.
We have that currently for the big set me to.
Yeah.
Uh, my standing, I am set up. So I think that's what. So I think that's what, that's why it's something so much, so it's really taking this that you already have.
And combining.
This that you already have, but also adding an extra level of things that you need to see prior to the budget process, prior. We can do that, I think that already has that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why, you know.
The master calendar.
Right. Yeah, I was thinking, we can, like, PPIs and I went and did some different adjustments on things of like. We don't need to see things necessarily every month on, like, certain things in PPIs or something that is supported periodically. That mentions that number of reports and I have more of the things I just.
John, do you need the, yes, thank you. Um, do you need us to vote on the idea of holding the twenty ninth, February twenty ninth, uh, but not holding the meeting unless it is. As a result of challenges we have encountered.
So, uh, we, we do not, I think the one time that we would require a vote is. If at a certain point you decide we don't need this, and then you make a motion just like we did on the twenty first. Say we no longer need this.
Potentially the joint meeting, that's that motion's gonna be top, the preceding meeting could be the joint meeting.
Right.
You can have opportunities prior to that, so for example, the January twenty fifth meeting. Um, there could be also a mechanism at February meeting, it's a joint meeting, but there could, I think there could be a way where the commission. Could give direction to staff, not people, not to have that. We can get clarity from the city committee, but I think there could be a way.
Would you clarify that for us? Yeah, please, thank you, okay. I'm sorry, I took this back, we were into April. Paying our taxes.
No, that's okay, uh.
I was just. Okay, um. So, when. Right, I mean, so one of the things I had for then was the work plan, was wanting to not just the water department, but the waters, so we can still work for it, but.
Yeah.
It was that he has a piece of protection.
Yeah.
So that would just, it captured that thing that those are regular work, in the work plan as well, but again, just kind of. It's, what about it, this time maybe this is when we look at water.
Sure, sure.
So I think we already have that on the schedule, so if you look at, I guess.
There are, there are standing water, but I wanted to add.
We can add source.
Yeah, yeah.
It's done, right, we can add that to January, February, that's when staff will need that.
Um, unless it makes more sense this year to do a little practice.
John, you have it for January, February, I think we can expand it to a food sewer and all that enterprise funds.
Right.
I, I think it's gonna coordinate it. I think the workings during discussions you're having, you talk to the.
Well.
Is that for, will not be centered.
It'll, yeah, it'll, it, it realistically. Um.
We're not needing this. I just.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so from, from the February the twenty ninth, then we, a- as I mentioned before, we're on the March twenty eighth. Which will have the, the actuarial reports, um. And a presentation by our actuary, um, on there as part of the budget kickoff. And then we have the, uh, April twenty fifth, our regular meeting, uh, that more likely will have, um, our. Third, year-to-date third quarter results, budget actual results, um, for that meeting. Uh, the May fifteenth will be our first, uh, budget meeting. Uh, with the City Council, so that we almost think of that as the budget workshop at that point. Um. Then followed by, uh, another meeting on the thirtieth. Um. For the second, uh, iteration of the budget, you know, whatever changes may occur between the fifteenth and the thirtieth. Then, um, then we have, uh, in June. You know, we've got three different scheduled meetings, and of course, this is all related to the budget. So the question is, do we need all three? Do we, do we want to remove one, do we want to have a contingency or pending? Kind of a process?
It looks like we're up to ten meetings and we're only two.
Yeah.
Since we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I've, no, I'm saying there's thirteen on here, just from January to June, that's ten meetings. So, yes, but it's regular meetings to special meetings, so that's what I'm saying, so. So if you do that, then the rest of the year in the calendar year will have to be of all special meetings from July to December.
With joint meetings are considered special meetings, yeah?
Yes.
Yes, so there are three meetings for me.
I'm sorry, say again.
You can have three regular meetings, they would be special meetings.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I think I'd rather have the three on there, but as we, if we can get this now into an efficient place, so we're doing stuff in the third logical.
Yeah.
Then, you know.
Come back to it.
And the register is not a surprise at that, perhaps, and maybe one of the hard parts is. One, the budget, yours is a hot mess.
Yeah.
And so I was trying to fix that up and go for a reconcile and understand that, I think not having busy team on.
Yeah.
Late, so not having that opportunity to, like, have kind of this. So I think you're making this a lot of pushing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Time. Different legacies, special meetings, it is better than doing either of the meetings.
Yes.
Everything else, everything else is going on. And that is kind of like locked in.
You can always decide the calendar, so it's better to have the days on.
You're a chancellor. That her desk is.
All on the calendar. Yeah, that's how I know.
My task on Monday is gonna be putting all of these in our calendar.
So, so other than the, the dates already mentioned, the twenty first, um, the rest of them will stay in this one, okay?
So, so. And you're suggesting we hold the dates June five, June, uh, nineteen, June twenty seven. Order for now, put them, lock it out, and then, um.
And aim for getting rid of June twenty seven.
Yeah, yeah, I think you can get rid of June fifth, too.
So I can throw myself some goals, our own PPIs. Sorry, yeah.
We, uh, we've had very close this year.
Yeah.
Let's not do that. Um, John, is that giving you the direction you need?
Yes, very much, that's.
Very much, and thank you for allowing me to discuss, I. I, I agree with you, as, like, have the date on my calendar, and then take them off, if you do, hit delete, there's a good. Uh, any other comments, questions, or concerns about this particular, uh, item, except for the fact that we're gonna be working very fast. Okay, uh, and John, yeah, uh, we didn't go through to December. Which would, which is the, uh, item, um, as listed in the agenda. And we asked if the next meeting, we can go from, say, July to December.
Sure.
Can you, can you give us, I guess, projected ones?
Yeah.
And you're, you're keeping in mind, we're, we, uh, suppose we meet before you take the same information to the City Council, right?
Correct.
Right, okay. Uh, any other comments, questions, or concerns, do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
We already do. Uh, would someone like make a motion that we, uh, vote on the calendar as amended?
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chair, we do have a public comment on this. Mr. Better.
My respect so much for the dignity of Chair and what you bring in your case, it was. What you have, you know, so, and. What you are coming out of, what we are coming out of over the last three years. Are anything that budget normal years. And what was brought to as a deficit budget measure. And then thought of was historic. Again, I love blue skies too. But I'm really gonna ask the staff in particular to. Hear it back, take it down a notch into what is a conservative assumption. And what needs to happen here. Conservatively, you need to be tapping the brakes right now, if not in a power slide about the fact that your budget year will not be necessarily these. Happy to lucky meetings, but instead, that you will be planning meetings at which you will be considering budget reductions. There's every conservative basis for me to say that to you. In adopting a budget by June thirtieth, is not an accomplishment. If the little mess that was left here today in November is what it is to you. The calendar is not useful in that regard, and the flexibility that you're gonna need, Mr. Chair, deserves it. To move like a butterfly and staying like a bee. Is to be able to spin on that and move very quickly into some very serious matters about budget reductions. They have to coincide with what Mr. Hill is doing. The garbage can that Bill Statler isn't having, whatever those things are. And bringing them together into a dialogue that balances a budget, because every bit of evidence suggests today, not only just the two point two that was. Adopted against your recommendation. But that has to be undone. It's not a blue sky, call me crazy. But our job as finance officers in the commission here. Is conservative first. I just. Make sure there's some office, isn't it great to be with you, thank you so much, that is a very important comment.
Thank you, Joshua, uh, take it into the gravity of the. Um. I ask for a motion to accept the calendar as amended.
I'm.
Second. Stephanie.
Chair Giuliani.
Approved.
Vice Chair Rossi.
Yes.
Commissioner Quaid.
Yes.
Commissioner Elsner.
Yes.
Commissioner Finley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh. Communications, City Council, Janice. Let's do take, go back and revisit the. Yes.
Then we can talk about in the calendar session.
Yeah, that's why, that's what, that's why.
Then the goal, you'll have time to come back and.
I think, I think the goal is to take this and come back, staff will come back to you, have it all in one place.
Okay.
So you can see that maybe on. And maybe take it a step further, Dawn and Sulewa, you look at what things would you want to drink strategically at this point. So commission has a chance, I think, you both know what documents are working on and what.
Sure.
Sure. I think they have like bonds in this, they have bonds in what the debt services is when you feel.
Okay.
So I do feel like some of that's going to get addressed in the five-year.
Yeah.
Projections to then figuring out how we want to be.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, City Council, Lee, as I'm communicating.
Just quickly, thank you for all your hard work, I think, I think, um. I mean, the, the mission's done a great job, I think staff is working really hard and does a great job and. Um, I think we're making a lot of progress and Dan is also doing a great job straighter, so. I think there's just a lot of really positive forward, that's not saying we don't have work ahead of us, but, um, I.
And Jen, uh, this question, what in mission we do in order, or different in order to support the decisions being made?
I, I mean, I think you're doing, and I think that. I would like, this is me personally, I would like the commission, as you're doing. To see the actor, to see the budget, to sort of, so that before anything ever comes to council, so that you guys. Um, have actually, you have the knowledge and the expertise, which within your purview, in my opinion, to sort of. Really do the lion's share of work. Get into a place where you feel comfortable. And you can make recommendations to council, like, definitely try to approve the actors on the budget spine. Um, you know, I just think, what else can you computer the council, yeah, for the budget?
So, so it's, it's really. With the financial report that, it's, it's really for the council, it's also received the file. And it's a presentation for finance commission, the reason why I, I state that like is this, so the financial, the other financial report. Is, it's, it's an audit, it's not, it's like. We have very strict constraints, and we can't really alter it, it's like. Here's what it is, here's what findings, if there are findings, and things like that, we present that to the finance commission. Uh, we also highlight one of the major events that happened during the year. Uh, so it's more of a discussion of the year end. Uh, it's, so it's two parts, think of it as a discussion about the audit, the audit goal, the findings, things of that nature. And then the second part of that is, uh, uh, the year in review, if you, if you will. What, what, what really transpired, what were our major revenues, what were our major expenditures, in terms of like program activity in there. Uh, and then, uh, the dialogue as to questionable, why is this, this is, or. How can we do this, things like that. Um, it's not something.
Well, you can modify it, but right, what I've seen happen in the last, least year.
Hmm.
Is that a draft gets given to the.
Mm-hmm.
But then the final gets given to the, to the, um, to the council, and it just usually changes.
So one of the things, uh, there will be no draft, it will just be a final report. So I want to change that, that, that just creates confusion.
Yes, it does.
Uh, and so I just, I, I, I think it's a bad.
Same, I think on the budget, there's been past year for the draft budget gets, it's presented to the commission that there might be some changes. So I just.
We have this timing problem.
Right, um, on the, on the act, so what I'd like to see is that this commission act is like the audit committee in public company.
Yeah, absolutely.
They look at internal weaknesses, the internal controls that the auditor might.
Mm-hmm.
Bring up, um, yeah, any major issues on the audit.
Yes.
I mean, that's what I perceive.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, absolutely, um, you know, typically the auditors will say, you know, what were their findings?
Right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Hey. Yeah.
Just great job, everybody, thank you so much.
We need. Uh, staff comments.
So, um, a couple of things, I just wanted to bring the officials' attention. Uh, so we, we have, uh, uh, hired, we're hiring two new staff. That will be on board November twentieth, and one is finance manager, and the other is, uh. Uh, physician, um, we have Terry Kim and Yana, um. Thank you, I was terrible with her name, um, and they will start on November twentieth. The other thing is, uh, we were notified on Monday from the, uh, Government Finance Officers Association. That they have, uh, given us an award for excellence in financial reporting. For the fifth year, twenty one, twenty two annual financial statements, um, on there, so that's a major. Uh, recognition of, of the report needs compliance with, uh, government standards. Uh, in reporting, so that's, so we're, we're moving in the right direction with things, you know, we always have, we always have. There's always things that are still to be addressed, but it's just reflecting that we are, we are making it later. Um, in there, and then the other thing I wanted to bring up, that the strategic plan is going to the City Council on December sixth. That was pretty much all I was going to, uh.
Thank you, John. See, now, you know that this award now is not going to be awarded, so it was sealed, and now set the expectation.
Yeah. Well, kind of to Commissioner Rossi's point earlier about, you know, having standard processes and routines and stuff. So this is now going to be kind of part of incorporating that into it. Um, and there, and the same thing, what you'll see in the years going forward, the audit will happen sooner, because the accounting will be cleaner, we won't be doing some. Dives on a sound plans and bases, looking at things. Um, the goal is to always have the other financial reports done before December first. That, that is the goal that, that we want to strive for, and that's what I'm pushing for, for the fiscal year twenty through twenty four.
We are too.
Yeah. Without assuming others, um, that's where the.
Well, I have none.
None.
And both of the staff members are coming to us with existing useful. Uh, finance experience, so we're hoping that.
Yeah.
There will be a site learning.
It will take six months to get it.
But at least they have a foundational. Think of knowledge, so we're excited.
And stuff.
Nice, so are we gonna, once they're on board, are we going to not be using our own cap?
Yes, we're not really, we're not gonna really, right now, I don't.
We don't have a problem.
We don't, we don't.
It seems to be. Not, not.
We use Robert Cap other departments, we use. We use staff from Mr. Chang, uh, behind the scenes, to some of the.
And is she still, is that firm still going to help us after we're fully set?
Um, for some special project things.
Such as implementation of new budget software, there's a couple of images we're launching where. We don't want to take our regular staff away from the things that you're doing to those special projects, so for the next few months, I'd like to continue using some additional. Just to get us to thirty.
Okay, I just was curious, because I know I, you know, I'll ask about it pretty much.
And, and, and so, uh, the, the reason why we use, uh, MB Chang is because they're retirees, they have a lot of. Experience, there's, there's not training, if, if you go to a place like Robert Cap. Generally, they're not going to have the experience, you're going to spend more time training them, and then provide them help. Uh, and so that's why we tend to do what we're doing with MB Chang, so she can, um, on them. And, um, yeah, so we're, we're implementing a new budget software, um, on there. Uh, that's going to take quite a bit, quite a bit of work, yeah, we've got to do a lot of work payroll, we've got to do some friends got it in payroll. Um, on there, and so this gives us more bandwidth to really take that on. Let's just, let's just that for a little.
And Sule, um, if I remember correctly, you were the one to, to throw the submission of the, for the.
Yeah, I came on last year about this time, and they were just starting.
Right.
So I work more closely with Albert, so kind of review of the initials and then feature it's really nice.
Once a year, we meet in this room with you. Yeah, exactly. Congratulations.
Uh, yes, I have one, um, my personal email address is given out here, somebody not. And that is my private information, so I'm asking that I'm not.
So dude, that was given to me by the city person. It's public information that I. Didn't do anything else, no disrespect, nevermind.
You asked me for, you know, to.
I, I already had it, because I'd given it to you months earlier. It was printed wrong, I had Cynthia, not Quaid, I had a different, uh, last name for a long time.
So, would you please note that?
I was giving all the other commissioners as well.
I, I just think, well, I'm, that's not good, I can't believe this, usually it's anybody else. You can wear it down. Okay, with that, I would put this meeting closed at nine eleven, thank you very much, everyone, have a great evening. And happy Thanksgiving.